City of Fulton council meeting to order please and we're going to start with the public hearing and that part is where we receive public comment on the proposed 2023, 2024 agendas. And so, does anybody have any questions? No? No question?
I would straighten my hair.
Okay. All right, then we are going to accept the budget as presented. It was in the newspaper for two weeks, right Tammy?
Yes.
And so, everybody had a chance to look at it. And so, we are just going to close this hearing. We don't need any roll call or anything. And we are going to go on to the regular meeting. And may I have you call us to order please? Mayor Wendy?
Here.
Alder Person King?
Here.
Banker?
Mask?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
Van Zuiden? Now we all stand and say the pledge of allegiance and the flag at the center of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we go to the swearing in of the new Alder Persons. So, we need everybody up front because we're going to do this in one big swoop. Doesn't that sound like it's going to be fun? So, I need Terry and Jackie and Bard and Keith and Jeff. I don't know that we've ever had this before. That's a good point, right? Okay, could they raise their hand?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office to which you have been elected according to the best of your ability? I will. Very good. And then we have more. I want a picture with them holding their... And I should say Jeff is filling out the rest of his two-year term and so he had to run again because he was appointed last time. Bard is a new four-year term for the first ward. Jackie is new for the fourth ward. Terry is new for second ward and Keith ran again and he got in unopposed for third ward. So, all of those people will be four more years.
Nicely done.
Thank you, thank you. Right. Well, thank you all for your time and your running and your opportunities to serve the City of Fulton. We appreciate it. So, now we go on to the new appointments by the mayor. These are all, all appointments are always done with council approval. So, I have first up city clerk. I have been asked for, from one of the Alder Persons, an explanation as far as how she does that job being, being the billing clerk as well. Tori is fully aware that her appointment as city clerk will be more or less just like you as elective officers. Her work for the agendas and all other work will be done after hours, not during her city clerk job. Now, if she needs to sign a paper, that doesn't take a matter of a minute to sign a legal document. But all others, because she will get a pay for the first meeting, second meeting, she also can work up to eight hours a week. That is per what you, you wrote for several months ago. So, that will be done all after hours, not while she's on duty as city clerk. She knows that's her number one job. And I chose Tori because she's here. It's nice. Sometimes we need those signatures and she will be here to do those signatures, but the other work, preparation of the minutes, all of those things will not be done on her time that she's the billing clerk. And so, and Tammy did it all with a bump in pay. So, it's not like we're adding any... Didn't you have a little bump in pay for that? No, I just got city clerk pay. Well, that's what I meant, I meant from your regular salary. Yeah, she just got the additional pay because she was doing both of the simultaneously. So, I don't think we should have any other questions about it and if you do, now is the time.
Okay. Now, like when Tammy retires, which never, I hope, but, okay, will we be hiring another, like she's a business manager?
Right? Yep.
We will be hiring her because, see, I was with when Lotta Hollis did and she did it all. So, that's what I was wondering. And this is what?
Well, they must definitely have to hire someone.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying because you can't move back to Tori without her doing it. There's no way she can do it all. So, there will be a position open there.
Absolutely. When Tammy chooses to retire, that, what is your position called? Business manager. Okay. So, we definitely, definitely will have a business manager. Now, she took it city clerk on because we didn't have anyone that ran. And Tori is doing the same thing. We didn't have anybody run. She will have this position for four years as an appointment and then if she chooses to do it again, then she will have to run.
That was another question.
Yep.
And now, okay, yes, the other thing was the monetary part. She will get?
The same as? I'm saying, no. No, you, you as a, remember when you put in the new wages for the newly elected Alder Persons, there was wages for, new wages for the clerk.
Okay, okay.
Which are different than what I'm receiving.
Okay.
But yes, that was approved by the council. Now, I have another question, Wendy.
Yeah. Then the ordinance reads that the council approves, but also with first advice to you. So, how can we vote tonight if we're seeing their names for the first time tonight because we need to have time to give you advice on your appointments? And then we come back and consent.
And that's perfectly fine if we hold these, both of these appointments until next meeting.
And then we got questions to ask of you or them in the meantime?
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make that, because that is the ordinance.
Okay.
I don't know, have these two had a chance to look at ordinance books at all yet?
A little.
Okay. So, they know what I mean when I go?
Well, they will. They'll get it, but it takes a little while.
The concept of the ordinance, as long as we pass an ordinance, it becomes a law. And so, we try to be very cautious and careful about how it goes to them.
And as an appointment, you have 30 days to, to...
That's, that's what it says.
Yes, you have 30 days. So, it probably won't be until the following. And so, that you have plenty of time to come to me or talk with the person or do whatever it is.
I would just like to have a little bit more information on the city clerk position because Tammy is the deputy, what's your title now?
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk. And now, Tori will become the full question. I know there's a lot more responsibilities for her.
I, well, I think I might disagree with you because I think Tammy does everything that a city clerk would do. I just know she has a different title. She does because she was appointed and because she doesn't live within the city limits. So, that's why we have to call her a deputy clerk. But her job and what she does is absolutely everything a clerk will do.
So, we'll vote on them then.
Yep, okay. And we have city attorney Rebecca Housange. I just would like her to stand if you would. And this is the one that I would like to appoint for our new attorney. Rebecca is here in town. I was grateful that she said yes, that she would try it when I talked with Bill. Bill was absolutely excited and said he would help her in any way possible and that he could, you know, she can call him at any time. He's getting to the point where he's, I was nervous as far as asking him because he's done such a great job for Fulton all these years. So, he was like, no Wendy, I'm okay. And he, he has three other cities that he does, so he's trying to back out slowly, but he says, I didn't want to leave you with no one because more and more attorneys, so plug your ears, are not doing this. And so, we are grateful Rebecca that you're willing to try. So, and that appointment is going to take place at the next meeting because they do have the 30 days. It's nice for you to be here to introduce yourself, okay? All right, we go on to recognition of volunteers. We have none. And then communication with visitors and we do have some. Bill or Eric, would you hand me if there's a sign up?
I don't have a copy.
Yep. You're up.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy's cool here for tourism.
So, I have a question. Someone was brought to my attention about the tourism book that was put out and I'm just wondering who appoints whoever to be on that tourism committee? How was, how was that formed? And the reason I'm kind of wondering because like the checks and balances, my name was wrong in the book, my address is wrong in the book and my webpage is wrong in the book. And it wasn't like, just like one mistake, it was three. I didn't even realize it was being put in the book, which is great that it is, you know, because I am the realtor here, I'm a realtor here in Fulton. But I think that there's somehow that something was missed that, you know...
I would think that you would have to pay for that ad as well. So, is, was there no contact made or?
No.
It wasn't an ad, it was just a listing. So...
Well, half, half a page list, so it was big.
I don't think so.
I never...
I think it's just a listing.
It was, so like in the book and I only just seen a picture.
Oh, okay.
It was in the Fulton, it was in the tourism book. And so, I just seen in there, someone sent me just a picture of it. It said, it said, Winmore Realty and it's a 1203 8th Street, which it hasn't been over there for how many years?
Forever.
And it has a web address for somebody in California.
Oh dear.
So...
Now, basically as tourism, can you, can you answer that?
Yes, so I, I take responsibility for that. My team, we did look it over. I did look back to the, you booked the year before and it was also incorrect that year. So, it's been incorrect two years in a row. And, and I do take responsibility for that. We just didn't catch it, which I apologize for. I know I did talk with Ron Gutierrez about it because the Herald is who prints these for us. And, but in talking with Kathy, I don't think he's gotten with Kathy, but Ron indicated to me that they would print the information in the newspaper and also give her some advertising to kind of help offset that. So, and I do apologize.
She was very contrite about the whole thing. My point was though, who, who makes up this committee? Because I was going through the, to the meetings for a while and then I had a little medical issue and I couldn't. And I had mentioned to Leslie that I wanted to be on the committee and she had said that she had mentioned like to get me, because I used to get in the emails and that, but weren't allowed to do that anymore because they're appointed by you or somebody else.
The tourism committee is not city sanctioned. I do not appoint the city, I do not appoint the tourism director. The only person that would be responsible is if we had a tourism director and our closest thing is Leslie. She's not full-time, she works part-time and, and it's very part-time for her. It's, it's not a full-time. But, but the tourism committee that you went to is not sanctioned. I don't do any of those appointments. We, we don't have one. Under Economic Development Committee, there is the tourism part where the Economic Development Committee will take that on if need be. Do we need a tourism director, full-time and Leslie will shake her head, yes? Yes, we do. And I don't really, not even full-time. We have budgeted 30 hours or $30,000, I think it is, and I think that equates to 30 hours a week. That position needs to be filled by someone who can be in this building. See, she's, she's hired...
Yes, absolutely. Right, right. And I support that, that ideally, yeah, ideally you would have someone here, but...
Right now, you gotta do, yeah, it's what you're putting in.
Right now, she's doing the best that she can with the amount of...
Twenty thousand.
Pardon me? There's only $20,000 budgeted for tourism director. And is it $20 an hour? Is that where I'm remembering?
No. This is just a presentation that she's giving to us right today.
Right, but, but if somebody's wondering where the information is coming from and we don't have that answer, I think it's important that we make sure that she gets that answer. And so, that's where we're at right now. And so, we're hoping to remedy that in the future.
So, I guess in the meantime, we should find out if that is the case. I know, I know that we know it's a public meeting that anyone can come to. I don't honestly remember who I talked to. I was, I thought I was under the impression it was an assignment. So, if that's not, then we can definitely work on that, figure that out. I guess I'll just need to understand a little more about the structure of it throughout the city.
That's perfect.
Yes, absolutely.
Leslie, do you know if those tour, tour guides are done printing for the year?
They're done. They've, yeah, they've hit the dock and they're starting distribution.
Yeah. Not once they're in that book, not getting them out for you.
Well, and we looked at maybe putting a sticker in or something, but there's 6,000 books printed that the Herald goes out and distributes most of them for us. So, it didn't seem like something we're going to be able to manage.
I just, my hope is, I think they're just, and I know we're working on it, but there really should have been a better check and balance. I understand like one mistake, but there was three.
Yeah.
And, and that was just a little too excessive for my taste.
Very good. And I hear you. We will try to address it. Okay, then we go on to Julie Mayner.
Good evening. Hi Julie, everybody. Our annual visitor. Here again for our annual bike lesson, flyer here. And just asking for pretty much the same thing as we usually do. Only this year, we're going to add a little bit more to it. Seeing as we've got golf carts legal now in town and a lot of people are doing side-by-sides, we would like to include the golf carts in the side-by-sides this year. So, I'm hoping this will bring a little bit more into the community. I think what I'd like to do is we usually close this area... Oh, hi Zach. We usually close, we usually close this area off and I'd like to put the side-by-sides and the golf carts right here. And I've been trying to get in touch with Markine from Crumpets. I'm sorry. I've missed the Crumpets name. I have left a message with him. We will not go down to the NMA's like we usually do because he's open on Sundays.
Okay.
And he needs to have access with the ramp and parking and stuff, which I have absolutely no issue with. But I would like to close off the one area right there on this, on the main drag and in front so that we can park the bikes there all the way down to the post office and then the side street here. I'd like to ask for 10, we have not been going past, much past 3:30, to be honest with you. I think I can stretch my neck out, say 5 o'clock and we usually have everything picked up by then, but that'll give us a little bit of a safe way, just in case. So, that will be June 4th, Sunday, starts at 1:00. And we usually, I've gotten in touch with the fire department, you know, they're going to bring the, one of the fire trucks out if it's available and we'll hang a flag and do everything the same way. The only thing that would be different would be the golf carts and the side-by-sides. I've talked to the people that are going to do the parking. The only thing that might change is I might like to steer them one block over this way and maybe come in here because we have a bear cake here, depending on how crowded it is in here. And maybe they'll come in and park this way. I'm kind of leaving that up to the guys that are parking. But they would, if they did anything, it would just come up here and then back in and then we'll have a sign posted. And the beer garden, we'd like to permit also out through Johnny's if that would be all right.
Yep.
So, be pretty much the same.
And those papers?
Spread the word for the golf carts and stuff.
And those papers you have to fill out, you know?
Yeah, I, actually I did forget about that.
Okay. You need to fill those out as far as if Johnny's going to be the person that's...
Yeah.
Not a event license, that is the other license.
And I'm, and I'm going to try, I tried to get ahold of the gentleman.
Oh yeah, that's going to happen.
Yes, and I love, I couldn't leave a message, but I'm going to continue to try and get in touch with him and see. I like to try and touch base with everybody. Ridded the, well, hi honey.
I was there when you came in.
Oh yeah, I missed you, I'm sorry. So, is that okay with you? We can do that? I know that's going to block you, but hopefully we'll get people to come in or, or clarity of Akira that lashed out. And Dutch Ovens is also going to, they usually do not do it on Sundays for profit. I've talked to Elijah and his family and they have decided that they would like to open up and anything after their overhead will be donated to our local fruit pantries, which is what we do after. So, I thought that is really cool for them to offer. That way they're not making any profits and they can still contribute and get word out for their businesses too. So, we came to a little agreement on that, which is really cool.
Oh, good. And I'm going to add something. Your event is never so done so well and so cleaned up.
Thank you.
I've been a downtown business owner for a long time and I can't even tell that you guys have been there.
Well, I'm glad you said that. I wish everybody else could hear that. And there's been 500 bike service. 600 was our best. 600 was our best. I know, we're kind of dwindling and coming back and sadly, but we still see new people coming in.
Yep.
And I really, really think this deal with the golf carts and the side-by-sides, if we don't do this, then somebody else is going to do it. And I really, really would like to include that. So, if everybody can spread the word through word of mouth and I did put it on the flyer and I will put it, and you can do that too. And I'm going to get ahold of the Journal and also I'll get ahold of the local radio stations to let them know that. I was approached about Jeeps and I don't really want to go back. I mean, we have some people, they can park on the side, but that's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
You know, if we can just keep it down to smaller vehicles, I think that would work out really great, so.
Very good.
Okay. Awesome.
Good job.
Yes, and Wendy, do you want me to?
It's supposed to be done 90 days in advance.
Oh shoot, okay. And I can get that to Dave because I don't see Dave very often. He's, you know, it's kind of a hit and miss.
Yeah.
So, I can get what I need. Tori, if you get to her and give me a buzz, I'll swing by. I've got to work this week, but I can have Kim pick it up or something.
Okay.
Do you mean David Johnny's?
Yes.
So, we have our tourism meeting there on Wednesday, right? Just a week, so if we can...
Well, I'll just swing by there on my way out, on my way to work and I'll let them know that and...
It's usually there in the morning.
Yeah, he's there every morning, but I'll leave a note. He knows what he's got to do, so I think that'll be it. We'll go ahead, we can have the barricades and then we'll just rope everything up like we always do. All right?
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing all the hard work.
Thank you for allowing us to do so.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda and all the items in the consent agenda will be enacted by a single motion and a roll call vote. Any item may be removed upon request by the mayor or an Alder Person and considered individually after all the other items. This is at long, the consent agenda, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll support. Very good. And may I have roll call please? Alder Person King?
Yes.
Banker?
Mask?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Boonstrom?
Yes.
Brundig?
Yes.
Very good. Then we go on to our business and the first up in letter A is to approve the 2023, 2024 annual budget located at the end of the packet. And because we had our public hearing, this council needs to approve it, correct?
Correct.
So, may I have the motion?
Support.
Did you get that? Okay, now roll call please. Alder Person Boonstrom?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Banker?
Mask?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Brundig?
Yes.
Okay, we go on to B and that's to approve a 10,000 donation or the amount that's determined by the council. I know Keith wanted an amount in there, so we put one in there for the impact program. I'm asking on behalf of Daryl Poe. He had all the statistics that you wanted Sue and you wanted some numbers. If we could postpone this till next meeting?
Yeah, because we don't have them.
Right. And, well, and we all know he had a hardship.
Sure, sure.
And so, we're going to bring that to the next meeting. And then we'll have some hard data as well and that's what Sue requested last time and Keith requested an amount be put in there. So, but that amount can be different, you know, this council may decide that. So, we go on to approve the van shell funding. Eric, do you have anything to say?
Those contractors this afternoon, he brought up some concerns about what is currently planned out right now. He didn't know if the snow load is actually calculated into it or not.
If the what?
The snow load.
Oh, okay.
So, I got to meet with Brian tomorrow and see if that had been accounted for.
Okay.
And just ask him a couple of general questions, but I'm hoping to get something from them by the next meeting.
Okay. Where are the snow loads?
So, it just, it pretty much, the snow that falls, if it sits on that building, how much pressure that's going to put on the trusses that are going to be up there? So, we're just trying to figure out if it was scoped out correctly. And I was, and he raised that concern to me just this afternoon and I, I didn't have a good answer for him. So, I got to find that out before we can keep going forward.
Well, we'll just keep putting it on there and we'll get there eventually.
I'm hoping he'll say, yes, that was all calculated, but just...
And then, then you're pretty good?
Yeah, then it's just waiting on the bids to come back in.
Very good. All right, we're going to go on to the committee as a whole and this is where we have discussion. There's only one piece that we have there. There have been some concerns last meeting. We raised the rental of the cattail from $45 to 100 and we also raised the deposit to $100. And there have been quite a few people saying, nope, I'm not going to bid and canceling their reservation. So, it's something that you, you all needed to be aware of and that we can discuss it. So, I think this is the time, what does everybody think?
Okay, one of the main reasons we raised those prices is it has air conditioning, it has heating, it has, it has septic and tables and chairs and everything out there. And that all has to be maintenance and the ropes and the flower beds and everything. And the other thing is the reason we upgraded the deposit, the cleanup, because people have left a lot of messes. When you have, what is it, $40 or $25 for a cleanup?
I think it was 45 and 45, wasn't it?
No, 40.
Can I address something? Yeah. Okay, Alder Person Van Kampen and I'll address this to Eric. So, we do have the $45 deposit. I have worked here since 2006. It is the responsibility for whoever inspects... It is the responsibility for whoever inspects it, which is Public Works on the weekends, to let us know that it was a mess. No one has ever let us know, otherwise we would have held the deposit back.
Okay.
We have never been told. Uh, there's only been one deposit given back since I have worked here. We need to know that, but if we don't know that-
Right, I was just, Nick had explained the messes that he had endured. They didn't, there's garbage bags there, they don't put garbage bags in, they throw the food in, they leave the floor a mess, they throw it on the floor.
Well, that's fine, but then they have to tell Tori come Monday morning, the place was left a mess. They don't get their deposit back. We have never been told that here.
And like, we felt that. Sometimes, I understand what you're saying, Tammy. Sometimes, people, if they leave a mess, they're not gonna think, and it's only forty-five dollars, I don't care, let them clean it up. But where you have a sometime, a hundred dollars you're looking at, they're gonna clean it up. That's what I felt, you know?
Well, and I agree with that, but there has to be communication given to the court office and let them know that it was a mess. If it was a mess all these times, look at all the revenue we could have gotten for the city, but we've never been informed of that.
Can I get clarification on this? So it's a hundred dollars plus a hundred dollar deposit? So they need to write a two hundred dollar check and then they get a hundred back?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I don't know if I can ask, I have a, is it for a certain number of hours? I mean, with raising the fee, can use it all day, can use it three hours?
Nope, it's all day.
So, it was forty-five for all day, now it's a hundred for all day? Okay, just wondering.
Yep. Well, I think we've brought the awareness forward, and so Jeff, you, would you like to speak?
Yeah, you said people are canceling reservations?
Yes.
If they had reservations and they run on the assumption it was forty-five dollars, I think we should honor that.
Right.
Um, and then the hundred dollars fee going forward to big reservations.
Okay. Tammy, do you have a lot? They're not canceling reservations, but I would say in the last two weeks, we've had at least two dozen people come in to rent it.
Thinking it was gonna be the forty.
And the forty-five, and every single one except one said, no, they will go elsewhere.
I think, when I go back to yours and thinking about that, it was designed for people who can't afford an event to rent in the Dutch Hall. It was intended to keep the price as low as possible for that reason. Somebody's got seven kids and they need it for a graduation party or something. It's designed, if it's gonna cost them a hundred dollars or two hundred, they can go to another event center. It was designed to help people in the community who otherwise wouldn't have a place to have a shower or a birthday party or-
But we're, I agree with you, Barb, there, yeah. Um, uh, but where are they gonna go for a hundred dollars?
I called, excuse me, I called, um, Inkins, Denios, um, Manny's, and just asked their rate in trouble play, just to be curious, and they were all like, a hundred or a hundred, a hundred dollars rental and a hundred dollar deposit. One of them, I can't remember which one, was just a fifty dollar cleaning deposit.
I agree with the deposit for the cleanup. I, and I agree with what you're saying, that if you make it steep enough, people will make a, make an effort to clean it. I agree with that, but I just think it was designed to keep it as low as possible for people who otherwise couldn't afford.
That's, that's fine, but the council voted, so it's whatever anyone can do again, that is fine. I mean, I'm just-
I think this conversation was before we voted.
That's right.
No one brought this, this stuff up before we voted.
I don't think we thought people would react.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it's probably just a surprise, because it's something new, but when they shop around and hear everything's the same, then maybe they'll start calling back and saying, oh, okay, everyone costs that much, well, we'll get now.
Well, I think it's a knee-jerk reaction to pull it right now. I think we need to at least let it go for a few more months to see if, you know-
Well, as I said, honor, you, you can't, people have already got it booked, I can understand, you can't up honor.
Well, and that's something that we could put on our visit photo page too. A picture with Cattail Park, these are our rates going forward, effective in May first, you know, and educate the people so that they aren't shocked when they call City Hall. Just getting the word out, so we can be more proactive instead of reactive when they call.
Cause they have a kitchen, they have all the appliances there, everything, you know, table and-
It's a beautiful setting, you're not gonna get a good view anywhere else in town.
I, but I, actually, it's, it's a decision of the council, I'm not, you know, I just brought it up and that's-
And it went through-
Because I know at a places, you can't get any place for under a hundred dollars, I know that for a fact.
Terry?
Increase the deposit, we leave them in the center right now.
That, but I still think we, we need to give it a few months. I mean, this is just our first, you know, and, and sometimes it does take. But I agree with, I think it's that two hundred dollars. You know, when you have to write that check for two hundred dollars at first, so that forty-five and then a hundred dollar deposit, because that's where it seems like we're losing. But if those girls aren't made aware, or Public Works doesn't tell them, then we need to start being diligent about taking the deposit money.
So, just to kinda put it in perspective for you, so say a table gets broke for whatever reason out there, it's gonna cost us more than a hundred dollars to replace the table that was out there. So I mean, this hundred dollars, in the grand scheme of things, isn't a ton of money, it's not gonna make or break us per se, but it's just to help kind of offset some of the costs that we have going on out there. Like, we're getting ready to do some mudjacking out there, that's gonna be, you know, a couple thousand dollars, so that, you know, it's, there's maintenance costs that keep coming in, that are always gonna keep coming in, but, you know, we're not doing anything with our price. That's where, in our meeting, we had kinda had the discussion and brought it up to the Parks Committee that, maybe let's look at it and see, see what happens. So, that's kinda where we all started at.
Right.
Do you have one person that closes, closes that down, or is it- Uh, it just depends on who's on call that week.
I think we'll keep talking about it, have it on there, and maybe get some reports from Tori and Tammy as far as weekly, how that's progressing. Because now that we have the meetings, you know, two weeks, two times a month, that, that's a good way to keep track and-
Well, I think it's interesting that, you know, that report wasn't coming back to City Hall, so we weren't getting any of it.
That's right. That's right. So that in itself is a big step in the right direction. Okay. We'll go on to committee reports and finance. Um, I don't think there's any Dan Spadhere's report either. Personnel, economic development, parks and rec, do you have anything to report on? I don't think you met, thank you.
No, but I'd like to have the meeting next seventeenth, on Wednesday at four o'clock, if I could, at City Hall. The next one.
And I will be making appointments for those committees in the next, in the next meeting, so.
That could change then.
Well, I don't think so at all. Public safety, do you have anything? Okay. Arena, any study?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting this last time, but it's flooded, flooded right now. Not a lot of water.
A lot of water.
Yep.
And Tony, we didn't have anything that we needed to vote on. So we're going on to the mayor's report. I only have that the fiber is getting closer, it's in Morrison. Um, for the new people that are getting seated, that we have a company called Serp, is going to put in new fiber for us. And because of the, the, um, supply and demand, that they, they couldn't get everything that they needed, so it's been well over a year, and we were told they were gonna start right away. Well, I've seen work in Morrison and they're starting, and so that's good news for us. It will just be within the city limits. And know that there's a program out there, um, that is gonna take place for Santa Prairie. And, but those are the outlying areas, and they did ask us to buy in, so that we did not agree on. So, your city administrators' report, um, Dana, it's not here, it's in your packet. And then Chief of Police Report, oh, I'm sorry.
Can we go back to the Alderman report?
Oh, yes, I always skip it, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Okay. Um, meeting before, are we gonna go back to committee as a whole meeting?
Yes.
Okay, when is that gonna start?
Next, next.
In May?
Yep.
All right. And then the other thing, um-
Committee of the whole, last time they asked, um, I didn't have the committee of, as a whole, because they would like the first meeting of the month to be discussion, discussion, discussion with no action.
Okay.
And then the second meeting of the month to, okay, we should have come to some conclusion without that discussion. And then if we didn't, maybe it's gonna take another meeting. But they want the discussion to be held first, and then the next meeting to be the action items. And so we are going to go back to that. I had it that you discuss, see where you needed to be, and then if you wanted to do action, you could. But it's, you know, people are feeling like those decisions were made too quickly. So I said, absolutely, we can go back to there, I'm, whatever the council wants, I'm, I'm buying it.
Well, the important thing about the committee of the whole, Jackie, is it gives the public- That chance to hear and do that. They, they know this is under consideration. Otherwise, when we come in, we talk about it, we vote right away, the public didn't have a chance, just like we just did. This is a good example with the deposits. You know, we talked about it, it made sense to us, we did it, and then we get the community next, so.
But that, that's a lot of times what happens.
But that's what the committee of the whole, that's what the committee of the whole really is. It's important for us to have the discussion, but it's most important for the public to know this is what's being talked about. So a lot of cities do ordinances that are read two or three times before they even vote out, just to make sure the public knows.
So the next time on the band shelter, can we have it put on as an action to approve it?
Yeah, there, it will be, yes, there will be two sections.
Because we approved, it's in the budget.
Yes, yes. There will be two sections, just as usual, because there will be more discussion items. You know, each meeting that we go to, there will be more. There's just this time, like Barb says, when we bring something new to the plate of the council, we want that time. But this has had many times, so if Eric gets his things done and everything just takes time, but yes.
Sure, I understand.
Yes. But we can also have action items. Yes, absolutely. Anything else, Sue, and anyone else under Alderman's report? Okay. Alright, then we're gonna go on to Chief of Police. He's got a wonderful plaque that we have here, that our, our police department received. Only I'm going to have Chief Netling explain how we got this wonderful plaque.
Uh, it was two years ago now, uh, our agency onboarded the Lexible, um, system, which is a system that helps facilitate, uh, policy and procedures for the police department that are in compliance with state, federal, and local jurisdiction and laws. Doing in accordance to doing that, we've completed all the requirements to be compliant. Uh, every officer is required to do a daily training, uh, which they have to log in either on a computer or their phone, and they have to, uh, read a scenario. Uh, once they read the scenario, they're offered, uh, a question to make sure that, uh, they're understanding the policy as it is written and, and as it applies to the, the police department in the city of Fulton. Uh, we've been a hundred percent compliant month after month, uh, which is fantastic, which is, uh, a showing of what are the officers themselves are willing to put it to the table to make sure that we're doing things the right way. So, um, I'm proud of what those guys have been able to accomplish. I'm not a lawyer, never claimed to be. Some days we act like we have to be lawyers, but there's a lot of things and there's a lot of thought that goes into establishing policy based on current state and federal law, and I couldn't keep up on it. So, uh, this is a great tool and a resource for the city, and it does provide some added protection to us as well.
Very nice. And I'm very proud of this as well. That means our department is working very hard, so.
Wendy, I'm, I'm sorry, I did have something else from Parks and Rec, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No.
Sorry. The Santa Claus house. Barb, you've had a lot of questions on that. Well, I take, I told you I was taking care of it and I'm on it. And I was down to see Jason Snyder, it will be done. And Cory, council, has agreed to move it down to Prairie, and he will move it for a click, for Fulton Dux days to where you want it. You have to call him, or call me and I'll get ahold of him. It will be taken care of, it'll be done. So, and Mr. Hanson will store it. I went down there again, and I've been on it, and I've been working, and then I get this email. So, yes, hopefully I got it all straightened out, yes, it's done. And Eric, we had talked, you know, you had said something about wheels to go underneath it?
Yep.
Well, my son said he does have heavy-duty wheels, like he will give you, you know?
Okay.
But he also said, it's an easier way, he can make tubes to slide underneath that.
Sure.
And then the forklift forks can go right in them tubes and it's not gonna go nowhere, so. So he said he can also do that and install it on the Santa House for us too, so. It'll make it a lot easier for us.
Maybe I can touch them here shortly.
Huh?
I wanna get to Santa House here first and then we'll figure out how to-
Yeah, that's right. And Cory said, when it's done, call, he, he's gonna take it down, he went through, he said, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I didn't figure it would be so.
No, and I had to talk to him, so Mr. Hanson is gonna store it for us.
Perfect.
Very good. I think you have more of your report, and there's a report in your packet. Does anyone have any questions for you? Very good report, it's always easy to read, it's wonderful draft, I love it, so.
I do wanna make it from the, from the award, I did a little digging on it. And they said they gave over thirteen hundred awards, so, and there's approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-five agencies in the United States, puts them in the top eight percent.
Wow.
I mean, it's a little bit of work for you guys, but it's a good deal. Okay, Public Works, the report is in your packet, does anybody have any questions? Eric, um, also has to the first ward, representing the first ward, are thrilled with the new sidewalks and that cabinet. It's, um, been a need for a half a century or more, we've been there. And, uh, so we're just grateful to have that done, thank you so much. It was our, we considered the worst one on our board, so it was a good-
I would say it's probably the worst in town.
Yeah, they told me that.
Yep.
You know, cause I'd said, you know, before, we said, this is the worst on our ward, and that's the one we're gonna ask for first. And they said, oh, and Paul Wurst, and he said, this is the worst one in town.
Yeah, but here it was.
We're grateful to have that done.
Well, and we're hoping to help you lots more. Yes, that's good stories, because we have the monies now to do at least some of them, so that's exciting for Fulton. We go on to Fulton Tourism, anything in your packet? Historical society, oh, yes, I've got mine.
Yep, we just passed those one, everybody can take one and tuck it in the packets. If anybody doesn't have one, I have for that question.
I have nothing else.
Historical society is on page twenty-one, any questions?
Yeah, just to Terry and Jackie, we put this monthly, our, our financial statement at the museum, since, um, the city owns that money as well as the property, and the historical society manages, and we give you a monthly statement, so if there's any other question about what is spending. And anytime we're gonna spend money outside of our regular monthly payments, we come to the council ahead of time to get permission. So you'll see that everywhere, we just wanna let you know. I also got a letter from-
Well, I did have a question on this, does this building generate any income?
Uh, no, it, it, so, it doesn't cost the taxpayer any money though, because there is, there was a, a state that was given with the house. So, we get the interest, the city gives us the interest off that to maintain the property.
Okay, I wondered where that was like coming from.
When you come up for a tour, you and Steve, I'd like to have you come for a tour, or if anybody else hasn't come there. And I'll give you all that, we've got the history of the house and it's really pretty interesting, so.
Um, the other thing, um, that I just wanted to share, was we got a letter.
Terry, not Steve.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Boonstrom, that would be quite a safe, right, if I just say Mr. Boonstrom. Um, we got a letter from our, our insurance company telling us that the, um, it's not costing us anything, but they're adding a-
but they're adding a provision to our contract, um, or agreement, is that, um, there will be no coverage for any cannabis use, or selling, or rate, or growing. If we would decide we wanna grow cannabis in our backyard, they're not gonna cover that. Um, and they, well, it's just exploded, I thought that was kinda interesting, since the city owned the building, I thought I'd let you know that, that's the insurance company is saying, we can't sell it there.
I don't think that was a soon thing.
It was not the plan, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I just kinda, they're, they're getting stricter and stricter on that, so I'm sure they're putting rules in right in lock, so. And people are trying to sell it, yes, and they're on that property, so they're, for now, Mitchell is just saying, don't, we're not covered.
We're gonna go on to a closed session, we have nothing to go into closed session for this meeting, and so I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, good.
And all those in favor say, I, we're out, and we all for coming.
This was your, please.
Okay.
You have a signature.
You don't want to be.
I think I'm expecting after the money on your certificate.
It's only that now.
Yes, I see.